Welcome to the November 27th meeting of Glendale City Council. You have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujianian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Karapetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. What's on the agenda?
The agenda for the November 27, 2018 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Friday, November 21st, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
Next would be Director of Community Development regarding preliminary concepts for amendments to the Downtown Specific Plan, DSP 1A motion providing additional direction to staff.
Can I, so I'd like to take item two before we take item one for special request. Yeah, you ready to present item two? Mr. Ramodo?
Read it into the record.
Read that into the record, yeah.
Number two, Director of Community Development regarding Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District Management and Disbursement Agreement, 2A motion, accepting a 10-year management and dispersment agreement administered by Downtown Glendale Association.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you are well aware, over the past few months, several steps have been taken to expand the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District, to create a larger district in an effort to enhance the services that are available in downtown. Most recently, eighty percent of the voters who cast a vote, cast their ballots within the district, supported the expansion. The item before you today is consideration of approval of the Management and Dispersment Agreement between the Downtown Glendale Association and the City of Glendale. This agreement is necessary and enables the Downtown Glendale Association to manage the expanded Greater Downtown Business Improvement District, and also sets forth the rules, roles, and responsibilities between the city and the DGA. The management agreement calls for things such as competitive bidding, reporting requirements, insurance requirements, and it also details how and when the city should pay its assessments. It is very similar to the same agreement that we had in 2013, with the exception of the following: We now have an expanded area which extends up to Stalker and includes more of Central Avenue. The contract is now 10 years instead of seven years. That is to mirror the actual, the district's agreement, and we have changed the name now to the Greater District. The DGA has managed the existing central business districts since 2013, and has been in good standing and in compliance with the terms of the management agreement. Most recently, it was asked and complied with the city's request to inspect the books in an effort to ensure compliance. This review is still underway, but a cursory review shows that their books are in order and that they are adhering to good accounting practices. Therefore, it is the recommendation of staff that the City Council consider approving the Management and Dispersment Agreement with the Downtown Glendale Association. We also have Mr. Rick Lemo available to answer any questions. He's the president of the Downtown Glendale Association.
Very well. Thank you. Mr. Ramodo, questions? No questions? Okay.
Yeah, we went over it. I think we're, I mean, if you've been to cities where they, they have an urban downtown core and do not have a, one of these organizations, you can really tell the difference. And I think one of the, one of the accolades and compliments that we get is how clean and well-kept and decorated. We've got the decorations up this year as well, Downtown Glendale, so. I don't know how much Rick Lemo had to do with it, but I know his boss and the Galleria are, are the large, largest contributors, and we do appreciate it, and I, I'm happy to see this, again, spread to, to other areas of downtown adjacent to the downtown area.
Very well. If there are no other, you have council?
No, we, we discussed this last time, and I'm fine with it.
I just want to say I'm happy that it's expanded to the, you know, the northern section of, of Brandt, so it's all good, and there are no differences, very few differences in this agreement than previously, so I have no objections to it.
And you'll move the item, Mr.?
I.
There's another one.
I'll move the item.
Do we have a second?
A second.
So about three people moved the items, so if the fourth person would actually...
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Okay. All right, maybe I have the roll call, please. Councilmember Agujianian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Karapetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian. Yes. Thank you. Back to item number one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, since it was already read into the record, I would assume it's okay to move forward with it.
Yes.
I'm going to pass this on to Bradley Calvert, who will discuss with you for the second time in, in terms of a workshop with the City Council regarding the Downtown Specific Plan, and, and he will take you through today's purpose, which is really to recap the meeting we had with you previously, a couple of months ago, stakeholder workshops that, that occurred in the meantime, talk to you about some concepts today, and obtain your consensus, and hopefully some direction, to then be before you sometime in January, with really kind of the walls of the concepts being put into place for you to be able to bless it at that time, for us to then be able to move forward by March of next year, in time for the moratorium that has been in place within the downtown. So with that, Bradley has a number of slides that he's going to take you through, and I'll hand the mic to him.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers.
Good afternoon.
As mentioned, we are here following up on the October workshop, where we took that opportunity to listen to council's concerns and ideas around improving the Downtown Specific Plan. From that, we have gone and conducted additional engagement, such as stakeholder workshops and walking tours, to further understand the current built environment and some of the improvements that could be made in the future amendments to the Downtown Specific Plan. So what we're bringing to you this afternoon are ideas and concepts on how we can achieve some of those goals, some of those things that we heard from council and the stakeholders. This is not a final set of recommendations, these are just more avenues that we can use to achieve desired results. So what we are really looking for this afternoon is, is your feedback of, are we satisfying those desired results? Are we in the right direction? We did not want to bring a fully baked product to council, we wanted to get more of your input before we go and take this back and actually develop the refined concepts. So you're not going to see specific measurements today, specific percentages, more the rough outline of some of the guidelines and, and recommendations that we would be making. So from here, I'm going to turn it over to our principal planner, Viliya Zemetidis, and she will give you an overview of where we've been and where we're going.
Thank you, Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers. As has been briefly described by both Ms. Beers and Mr. Calvert, the purpose of today's meeting is to recap the City Council's comments from your workshop, also the stakeholder comments following the workshop, to present the concepts, to obtain council's consensus on those concepts, and to move forward with the next steps. Slide before you shows a timeline of the Downtown Specific Plan Updates Process. We are on track for a presentation today, bringing back the details in January, presenting the amendments to both the Planning Commission and to the Designer Review Board in February, and bringing the final product back to you in March, in time for the expiration of the Downtown Specific Plan Moratorium on March the 23rd. As was noted, staff conducted a council workshop on October the 2nd. We presented various urban design and open space design principles, as well as topics as a starting point for council's discussion and on council's vision for the DSP. The takeaway from that workshop included council's concerns to avoid blocky buildings of uniform height, to require higher quality materials appropriate to the style and placement of the, on the building, and specifically at the ground floor level, at the pedestrian level, and then also to ensure well-designed, interesting building facades. We also heard that the streetscapes and pedestrian experience really needs to be improved. That would include wider sidewalks, greater setbacks, and more street trees, also to provide for public open space that is usable and tractable and active, and finally, to provide for a more diverse, somewhat family-friendly mix of housing units. Following the council workshop, staff brought together and hosted a meeting for a stakeholders' group. This stakeholders' group was a balanced mix of architects, urban designers, developers, as well as representatives from the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, Glendale Chamber of Commerce, Glendale Historical Society, the Downtown Glendale Association, as well as representatives from the Designer Review Board, the Planning Commission, and the Arts and Culture Commission. Informal feedback from that group included similar statements as council, regarding council's streetscape comments and urban design feedback. They also promoted street topologies, the classification of streets, and this would be to direct design and standards. They supported a reexamination of the DSP incentives to offer more desired public benefits. They called for regular DSP updates every three to five years, and they endorsed projects to go to the Designer Review Board for analysis and recommendation prior to City Council. Staff then in turn scheduled walking tours with a number of council members, those that were available at the request of council members. These walking tours were of the projects along Central Avenue, and members saw firsthand the quality and detail of the existing developments in the DSP along the streetscapes and publicly-accessible open space. The walking tours essentially reinforced comments made by council during the workshop group. We also took a look at the development standards of comparable neighborhood, neighboring cities, and the research helped identify best practices and key opportunities to update the current Downtown Specific Plan standards, especially in regards to public, publicly-accessible open space. From there, staff developed a list of concepts that would help guide and address council's preferred vision for the DSP, and we also met with other city staff members, this would be from the Public Works Engineering Department, the Fire Department, and Building and Safety to make sure that the concepts align with the city codes and standards.
So what we've done is broken this presentation essentially into five categories: Building Design, Streetscape Design, Open Space, Incentives, and General Policy. Some of these are going to be briefer than others, but what we'd like to do at the end of each one is pause for a moment and check with council to see, are we in the, are we answering the questions and the concerns that you had? Are we moving in the right direction before we go on to the next topic? Also, are there additional considerations that we should put into the mix as we move forward? So our first section here is urban design in regards to buildings. What we heard is that we're lacking in, in visual interest, these are large, you know, stucco boxes, there's not a lot of eclectic nature to the design of the buildings, whether that's in materials or forms. And what we are looking at in terms of addressing, creating more interesting buildings and more interesting roof lines, would be, first off, to consider eliminating the stories requirement, and the next slide I'll show you will explain why that should be put into consideration, why it could be. Creating step backs at upper floors, and what that means is maybe after the second, third, fourth floor, the building steps back, 25 feet, 20 feet, some distance, so it reduces that scale that's kind of looming over the sidewalk, it creates that walking environment, a more human-scaled one, if you will. Another concept we've looked at is height averaging, and again, we'll show that in the next graphic, but the idea that there could be locations on the site, portions of the site that could exceed the existing maximum height, if other portions are suppressed, essentially, if they're held lower. So that across the site, the entire building would average out to a maximum of 65 feet or a maximum of 75, whatever it may be for that zone. And we'll show how that may actually be beneficial in terms of our transition areas as well. So looking at our current development standards, this is by right. You can see in the chart that we have height in stories, height in feet, and the permitted FAR, the floor-area ratio, and what we'd like to look at or consider is removing that stories requirement. What that does ultimately is set the floor-to-ceiling height average for a building, and our heights right now allow for more floors. Now, I would like to mention here, we're not looking at increasing FAR, we're not looking at increasing the overall buildable area, we're trying to create more flexibility within that box, essentially, that the development can occur in, and right now, that stories element essentially is, is creating more challenges in terms of filling that box, and for us to create a more diverse skyline, more interesting roof lines. Essentially, one too many dimensional standards really puts us into a box. What we really want to focus on as part of this is that the design guidelines have more teeth, they're more enforceable, there are less guidelines, there are more requirements, and try to get that visual interest that way. So right now, what we get are boxes such as these, where it maxes out that, that height, and what happens is we just get this top floor that just ends up being essentially a double-height mezzanine space. Again, it's, the, the building's been, you know, a datum line's been created. Otherwise...
Question, please?
I have a question on that. I think these are the, the areas that has no, is there a density limit on these?
The FAR is, is the measure of density in this case. So not by unit, but square foot.
I understand, but there is no unit density limit.
Correct.
So by this, you're going to increase the number of units, and it will, I think it will be kind of the opposite of what we were talking about, to encourage larger units, or two bedrooms and three bedrooms, have a better unit mix, if you will, because right now, if you can build, instead of a four-story, you build five-story within the same height, that's what you're saying, right? You're saying, take this number of stories out and keep the height.
Correct.
So instead of in, let's say, in 95 feet, for example, if they, right now, the code allows six stories. If they can, if they can build seven stories, that means it's the same FAR, but it will give them a more floor, one more floor, that they can squeeze more units in there, but it just changes the, it increases the number of units, therefore, because of the parking, it's going to be smaller units. So I think we have to be careful on, on taking that, that element out, because right now, it won't find between all of this, I don't know, 4,000 units, 4,000-plus units that was built, but taking that limitation out as well, it's just going to create more mass right now. I understand on the, on the top floor, when they have a mezzanine, they, it's not considered a story or a floor, so we say four floors and a mezzanine, it's not five floors, the height is five-story, but it's not a five floors building. So I, I think we need to be careful as to how, how the product is going to look like, and what's it going to do on the, on the density.
And that is, that is correct about the mezzanine level, that's, it's one unit and essentially what could be two. And this is something we, we do need to dig deeper on, kind of back of the envelope, calculations show that most of the buildings that we're achieving or creating mezzanines were still maxing out that floor-area ratio. So the, the hope is, the goal here is that we would squeeze them into a larger footprint, essentially. If, if we were to allow them to have more stories, they can still build under the same construction type, the FAR would still remain the same, we would hopefully just squeeze them a little more, and then some of the ideas that you'll see behind the incentives would hopefully help mitigate some of those concerns as well, such as diversity in unit mix, so that they're not all studios and one-bedrooms.
But in that case, it has to be kind of spelled out, that if you're not providing the, if you're providing more, or if you're using the incentive, or whatever you want to call it, and you have one more floor, the building footprint has to be smaller. That's, that's it, that's, but it's, it's the same, same result at the end of the day.
And we could put, and one of the things we could look at is adding triggers, essentially, that if, yes, they want to add that additional floor, you're correct, they got to shrink that floor plate, whether it's the height or that floor plate size or the unit number, we could actually put triggers in there that would put other things into play, so that it would ensure that the building would be narrow and, narrower and taller rather than shorter and squat. So there's a number of things we could do on that.
Because, again, in order to get larger units, you have to have some sort of a density limit, unit density limit. So if you have an envelope, that your FAR is, for example, I don't know, 3.0, you build 100,000 square feet, if you can build only 80 units versus as many units as we can fit in there, so you achieve larger units by having a, a density limit on the, on the, on the number of units.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir, thank you.
So in other instances, as exemplified here, what we're getting is buildings that aren't achieving the maximum height in general, but there's still that, that strong datum line, there's not a lot of diversity in terms of the height. In addition to the stories consideration, as I mentioned before, there's height averaging, and the idea here is that if 65 feet is allowed on site, maybe half of that could be displaced, and the other half of that site could actually exceed that 65 feet. We're still going to be maxed at about 85, based on current construction materials, just because that's, that's what the International Building Code requires, but in theory, you could displace some of that off to another location in the site, maybe that creates a better transition area, if there are lower heights, lower densities, in, in the opposite direction, and then push that over. So the idea is that this would all average out to be the same, that red line would represent the current maximum height, but you can see that on the left side there, we're suppressing it. So one of the things that we're also considering to create more diversity, there's a building on Central, it's across from the, the recently completed Next, that's similar in that, there's a taller portion, the other portion is held at about three, four stories, if I'm not mistaken. And it doesn't necessarily have to be this, this 50/50 splitting, there, the, the design could be more complex, we just kind of brought in a more simplified diagram to explain.
Is it on the east side or west side of this?
West side of Central, the brick building.
The brick building?
Yeah. I believe there's a doctor's office in there, if I'm not mistaken.
411.
Yeah, that's correct.
411 North Central. Okay. Oh, yes, yes, sorry, yeah.
So other things we're looking at, the massing and modulation, so that we don't have constant 300-foot runs along the sidewalk, where the, the facade offers a little variation, little interest. We can put in requirements that would necessitate recesses or projections, so it could create little courtyards, the facade could push in and out as you move down the sidewalk. One of those ways to do that is a maximum facade length, before you create a moment such as that, maybe that facade pushes in by five or 10 feet. Typically, it's a ratio of the building height. So again, we're not going to bring numbers here today, we're just bringing examples to how we can, can mitigate some of those things that we're seeing right now. Building separations, as we discussed in the, in the workshop, we can create those, again, through a maximum facade length, there has to be a separation in the building. The goal here would be to actually have that separation come down to grade, rather than having a continuous facade run along the street level, so a separation, stairs cascading down, it could be accessible to the public, but otherwise, it just creates another visual interest point in the facade. One of the examples that we looked at, so this is one existing building in Glendale, and we searched kind of high and low for other building examples that we thought might achieve some of these elements that we've discussed, the, the base-middle-top for buildings, the modulation, the materiality, and the example that we found here, this is a building located in Charlotte, North Carolina, it's a little bit taller than what we would probably have, but what you can see here is that the building is a very clearly-defined base, a very classic kind of element to it, there's an arcade to it as well, it's a different material from the middle, which is brick, you can see that AB/AB rhythm, so the building is not just one consistent facade run, but it undulates, it modulates with material and depth, and then as you move up the building, it steps back, that, that step back from the 20, you know, 45-foot level, maybe, 20 feet back, and the materials also get lighter, so that the building's not looming over the sidewalk. And one thing that's really important here is that, and this has come up in conversation as well, is that, that line between contemporary and traditional design, and these elements and materials can help us create that kind of diversity, it allows us to balance that, that traditional and contemporary design, so that not, we're not getting all of just one style. Another example of this building that we wanted, that we, that we looked at, is if you look at the lower level on the corner here, in a very short run, it's a very diverse storefront, essentially, you have a corner feature, something that we talked about in the workshops, here with this, this almost rotunda-like feature. They've even integrated a historic element, it was an old building that was on the site, they built around it, left it plugged in, but you also have another storefront in the center. So every 10, 15 seconds that you're walking along this building, you get something different, it creates that interest, much like what we see on brand with those older, smaller buildings, so trying to recreate that in a, in a larger context.
Do you know how old this building is?
That building was built 2003, 2004, if I'm not mistaken. It, it, it's a longer building than we would probably see, you can see that image on the far right than we would see in Glendale, but we thought as you, as you moved up, it represented a lot of the elements that you discussed at the workshop.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, just, just my comment, you know, I, I don't know what to say about that building. The bottom part I love, but you're mixing, you know, classical brick facade with a modernistic glass and metal. I don't like that at all, in terms of the architectural style. The setback, if that's your point, I get it, the height, the modulation, I get it, but what? You know, you live, you know, I live in the new part, no, I live in the old part, it's like, anyway.
And a lot of other...
Your other points are well-taken, but in terms of that specific building style, I'm not crazy about it.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor...
Of course, please.
And thus, you get the, the distinct differences in taste and opinion, because I love that building, I love the, the interest, I love the architecture, I love the different textures, and so, you know, agree to disagree, but that's, I know that's what happens in, in design and architecture, so.
I like it too, Mr. Devine.
And we're certainly not trying to recreate the building, I think one thing we want to look at, and that's, it's kind of a hard thing in finding precedents, right? It's, it's really breaking it down to the basic core elements, you know, in, in the upper levels of the building, yes, the mullions and the windows, that reflects a very contemporary nature that is a bit contradictory, but there are certain things that could also be done to help mitigate that. So speaking of materials, we heard comments about needing high-quality materials, that we're seeing the same EPIS, the same stucco material, it's applied to every building, the color variation is not there, the visual interest is not there, and, and what we could consider doing here is, one, requiring specific materials at the street level, and that would be materials that would be of human scale, so that could be brick, that could be wood, it could be, it could be aluminum panels with bricks in them that just reflect that human-scale nature, and essentially, we can develop a palette that, that applicants can use to guide them in that lower-level design. But as you move up the building, we could start letting more elements such as EPIS in, we can't fully take that out, for, for many reasons, one being that we're in an earthquake zone, it's actually kind of necessary as you get into some of the higher levels of these kind of buildings, but we can limit it, and that percentage allowed can go up as you move higher into the building, because you're, the human-scale element is not quite as important. So what we're looking at is how we, again, breaking that building in the base middle and top, and this example that we're using here, just kind of a quick diagram, also shows that, that step back at the upper level, but at the lower level, you can see elements of masonry or wood, as the example shows there on the right side. As you move up the building, you can start to integrate elements of, of EPIS, but you still have some human-scale material, maybe this is on the third, second, third, fourth levels, so you have these aluminum panels that are meant to resemble wood, and as you move higher, that material could continue to get lighter, less detailed, as you get into, to glazing or EPIS, depending on what that use is, and, and also the orientation of the building. You know, a, a point about this one is that you likely wouldn't be able to have that kind of glazing facing the south or southwest side here in Southern California, that would, it's been a problem actually in Charlotte, all that glazing and the heat that it creates, but. So the, actually, I'd like to stop here, and I know that the councilmembers have had sort of several comments, we want to make sure that, you know, are some of these, are all these concepts addressing the things that were important to council based in the workshop? Are there other things that you would like us to consider? Are these things that you would like us to, to move forward with and flesh out those details?
Earl, who wants to go first? Councilmember Najarian.
Well...
Well, hold on, how about questions for staff first?
Uh, no questions for staff.
Questions for staff, anyone? Because I'm going to, I have a public speaking card, we'll take the card before...
Let's hear the public first.
Oh, you have questions for staff?
No, I don't have a question.
No, no questions, all right?
Well, I, you know what, I do have a question on, and I'm sorry, this goes back to this, stakeholders' feedback, maybe I should save it for the end, it's about the create classes of streets, and I, it doesn't have anything to do with what we just...
That's actually the next category. So, so this one, the feedback we're looking for is associated just with buildings here.
Okay. So are we going to take these piece by piece?
Yeah. If there are no comments, we can move on to the...
Why don't we do that, then we'll, we'll take the speaker after we're done with the entirety of the report, if you don't mind. Why don't we do that? Let's, let's go on with the report.
So here, we're going to focus on the public realm, and what we mean by that is the streetscape, essentially, not open space, that's actually the, the next category. And, and what we've heard is to create a more inviting, usable, and attractive streetscape, a public living room, if you will, we've heard comments about more engaging storefronts, things that open up and spill out to the street level, street beautification, maybe there's not enough vegetation, there's not enough urban amenities, the material palette is not diverse enough, and what we are looking at, the concepts that we're proposing here, one is to develop a streetscape character typology, to essentially create classes of streets, and to also focus on the frontage elements at, that lower level of the buildings, and how we create more engaging storefronts, more engaging residential entries, so that the public realm is more inviting, it is more public, it is essentially just more well-designed. So elements of a beautiful street, essentially, wider sidewalks and parkways, so that the planting strips or the trees that are on the curb edge, pedestrian-scale lighting and fixtures, things that make the, the space usable and safe at night, wayfinding signage, so that we can direct those that are pedestrians to key locations within our city, key features, intersections, so that they create these nodes, these moments as you're crossing streets, that are not just about trying to get across the street, but there's some visual interest there, maybe it's a gateway to a particular use or a particular neighborhood or district. Integrating public art and making... Integrating public art and making sure that there are active uses that face the streets, not blank walls, not uses that are not activated on a more regular and frequent basis. In this example, some of the wayfinding, this is something that we have actually done in Glendale, these temporary signs that let you know how many minutes' walk you are from a significant and key location. And what some cities are doing is they're actually incorporating this as part of their wayfinding and their streetscapes. That for pedestrians, we are letting them know where that next significant node is, whether that's a commercial, significant commercial location in the city, or if it's a public facility or a civic asset. And when we say intersections, this is essentially what we're discussing, is how we create them to make them more of arrival points, more of gateway. So maybe it's a change in material, or maybe it's something that's whimsical and fun that actually fulfills some of the city's desires to establish more art into the urban streetscape. So right now, we have a handful of classifications, primary entertainment, residential, and then there are all others. And what we currently do is dictate the minimum and maximum setback, and that's the sidewalk. But if you recall that prior image, there are a lot more elements that go into creating a great street, a desirable street, an inviting street. What we are looking at in terms of a concept is expanding that classification, creating additional ones, and expanding those requirements that go into the design features. It's not just about the width of the sidewalk. As we heard from council and stakeholders, several streets, including Central, the sidewalks just are not wide enough. So going forward, how can we ensure wider sidewalks? How can we ensure greater activity? And that's by expanding that list of requirements, not just from the setback, but the type of vegetation that needs to go in there, a more coordinated effort on that. The actual design, the urban amenities, does that street need a bench? Does it need a trash can? Does it need wayfinding? The entrances as well, that's all part of that, those design requirements, those design guidelines, what kind of entrances face out onto the street. As I had mentioned, signage. One of the examples of a streetscape typology would be mixed use, again, requiring active retail and storefronts. That's kind of what we already have on brand and looking at where we need to expand that in other locations. Making sure those storefronts are engaging and that they're transparent and that the uses are active. It does not just have to be an aluminum storefront. If we look back at the workshop that we had before, we had seen several of those very standard, very static storefronts. And what we're looking at are those, you know, the garage doors that roll up for restaurants. They swing out. The activity spills out into the street, and you're invited in. Open space, the pedestrian-scale lighting, ensuring high-quality materials. Maybe there are locations along that sidewalk where it doesn't need to just be concrete. Maybe it's signifying an important civic asset or a commercial asset that's there. Again, incorporating public art into that. A street that would require less elements would be, say, a multifamily street, which could be a typology that we would include. That would include more focus on vegetation, whether that's the street trees, the parkway and the buffer. Again, widening the sidewalks a bit and really focusing on how those residential units engage with the storefront. Essentially, the address is facing the street. They're not walled in enclosures, but it's much more walkable and inviting and engaging. Other elements to that include some of the other frontage elements that we discussed, particularly on our walking tours, were the garage entries and some of those exposed utilities. So in this case, we could put a requirement in there that says you must conceal all utilities that are exposed on the underside of the garage. That could be some sort of ceiling, a false ceiling. We could also look at requiring decorative paving so that as the pedestrians moving along, I think we all know that a lot of people like to look down at their phone or look in other directions. If the paving starts to change, that signifies to them, hey, I'm at a different location. It makes them more aware of maybe cars that are coming out of garages or driveways. And just overall, just concealing more of the guts, the utilities, those functional elements of buildings. Ideally, we would look at how we could require garage entries to be located on the alleys, less on the streets, so that that minimizes the number of pedestrian conflicts with automobiles. So before we go to open space, I would like to pause here for a moment, get council's considerations regarding this creation of a streetscape typology, expanding those requirements, expanding those guidelines.
Questions?
Questions?
I don't have any questions, Mayor, but I have a comment. I just think this is fantastic, and I just have written down here, where were you five years ago or ten years ago with these ideas? I think that I'm sure that on that walking tour, it was very noticeable that we have a lot of streets and buildings that have no landscaping, whereas when it came to DRB or before council, there was landscaping on the plans. And now we look at that construction and those buildings, and there is no landscaping. I don't know if it's too late to go back to these buildings and these owners and say, can we put a pot here or a pot there? And that's why I'm very encouraged by this plan and these suggestions. Very encouraged. Thank you.
I have a question, but I had to ask probably a little bit earlier. On page three of your report, number five, where it says stakeholders' feedback, I just, for stakeholders, I just received lots of emails, and they want to know how we selected those stakeholders because they have a problem with that. So there are tens, maybe twenty, thirty email I received that they are representing the landlords or property owners or developers, and ordinary people are not part of those group of stakeholders.
Councilmember Ajani, the stakeholders were selected from a variety of facets from the city. They represented members from the boards and commissions, the design review board, planning commission, arts and culture commission. We also invited representatives from the homeowners' coordinating council, the downtown Glendale Association, the, I'm looking through my list quickly, Glendale Historic Society, as I mentioned, Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. And then we also included a number of developers, real estate individuals, and architects. And these would also include developers and architects who recently worked in the city, who went through the process, who would be able to tell us exactly where the DSP falls short and where we can make those improvements. So it was a very balanced group from a variety of professional facets and representing city commissions and also civic organizations within the city.
That's where they are, excuse me, Mr.--
Please go ahead.
That's where the complaint is coming from. They say here we have developers, engineers, architects, I don't know, developers, as you said, and this doesn't represent the entire city. These, all of them are really stakeholders, that the buildings and doing engineering work or architecture work or selling the property or unit or whatever is their business, and they will benefit from it. The ordinary people is not part of it, of course. I was told that these are people who have some experience in these matters, but it would be, that would be the base. Then jury trial, when you see they pick up ordinary people, maybe there are engineers there, maybe there are others in there. I mean, they don't come and say, okay, we pick up twelve attorneys because they are mastering the law and rules and regulations, so let's pick up the attorneys for the jury panel. So I think we have to look into this stakeholders' group and make it such that we represent entire city, just the professionals to be presented in that group. I guess I have a problem. I guess that's why I got lots of emails about it. So maybe we want to look into this matter.
So let me ask, you know, we go through this exercise of council questioning to ad hoc committees or stakeholder groups that are formed periodically to be part of a process that council has specifically requested. For example, this, or previously, I remember, last thing that comes to mind is the Arts General Master Plan study. And often council finds out later that, whoa, there was a body created that helped the process, and the council members are unaware of it. In that case, there were highly questionable individuals on that group, in that group that I think there's unanimous consent that they shouldn't have been there. And then people that council members would want to be there were never considered, never appointed. So I think, I think I'm addressing your issue. Is there, I mean, can we avoid doing that? Can we, you know, if there's something, that's something that's specifically requested by council, engage council in that process. And last thing I want is for council to micromanage these types of things, but at least some buy-in and input from council members as to do they think the stakeholders are, I think is appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mayor Sananian and councilmember Ajani, a point well taken, and I think this is one of the items that you all had brought up at least a year ago when I was first appointed city manager in terms of your ability to at least know about the committees that are in place. And if need be, give feedback in terms of who should be at least part of the committee, not the entire makeup of the committee, because at times, as you know, there's Brown Act issues if it's a committee of the council, et cetera. And so in terms of just practicality, there are times that we have committees, stakeholder committees, et cetera, that we have in place to be able to gain some sort of understanding from the community's perspective, depending on the subject matter, what their thoughts are. But a point well taken. We will make sure to give you the heads-up of these committees. That way you can provide feedback as well and be a part of that process. I think if we go through the names of individuals who were part of this committee, the stakeholder group that gave us feedback, I can't even call it a committee. It's just a group that came together to be able to provide us with some feedback. I think you would find that it is a pretty well-versed committee that can give us feedback related to the downtown specific plan so that you aren't spending a whole lot of time in the education piece of it. These are folks who can give a perspective. I think that would be helpful, bless you, to all of you as well as the staff. And Viliya can share with you who was actually on the committee. These are the folks who can give you very specific examples of what can and can't work based on their expertise. From the one hand, in terms of the developers in the real estate community, and from the other hand, we had a number of folks from the homeowners' association to be able to give that perspective as well. But with that, Viliya, if you can cover maybe who was on the committee. But a point well taken, and we will definitely try to provide you with that information in advance.
Would you like me to go through the names as well? We had Linda Abe from AECOM, which is an architectural consulting and planning firm. Rick Abe from Media Portfolio, who is a certified urban designer and works on a number of urban design projects with other municipalities. There was Eric Olson from TCA Architects, who, one of the architect's recent downtown specific plan project. There was Rodney Kahn from Kahn Consulting, who is a representative for many of those projects as well. Randy Stevenson from Stevenson Realty, who has long-term real estate consulting. There was Joseph Stidick, who was the representative from downtown Glendale Association, who is also with IPS Realty Management, so from the real estate side. There was Brent Gardner, the general manager of the Glendale Galleria. Greg Tan, who was the representative for the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. Shont Sahakian, who is the representative from the Arts and Culture Commission. Alan Malikian, the representative from the Design Review Board. Talin Shabazian, who is the representative from the Planning Commission. Catherine Yurka, who was the representative from the Glendale Historical Society. Ronde Warner, who was the representative from the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. Grant Michaels was also invited for the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. And Armine Mobssessian from TCA Architects as well, an architect, urban designer, who actually lives in the city of Glendale.
That's why, I guess, they were complaining. They were saying twelve of them are people who are somehow involved with the projects or they will benefit with what they will decide. I'm saying just, hold on one second.
Well, I mean, that's a good point.
Architects, there are five architects. The way you read the names, there are five architects, three realtors. Actually--
Yeah.
One is designing, helping the designers and architects. So I say three architects. And some of them, you didn't say what they are doing, but I was told twelve. I counted at least eight of them. They are somehow professionals who will benefit from what they will decide. I mean, I don't want--
I mean, I heard at least one name, yeah, name of one professional was probably associated with eighty percent of the construction that's happened in the last seven, eight years. I mean, that's problematic.
The council gave us some direction on concepts, and we developed those concepts. The purpose of this particular stakeholder group is to test those. Does our concept work? Could you actually build it and achieve the vision that the council had? And so, yes, it was weighted or there were more professionals on that panel than otherwise because that's the information that we needed. We wanted some representation from the entire city. Now, if we were doing some other public policy, we wouldn't want to have a panel that was so commercial and not as represented by the homeowners' group. But in this case, we were trying to take the vision that you have, develop concepts, and then test them. If we, and I will take responsibility for not alerting you to the fact that we have that group, but it was part of our process to test the things that we were going to be presenting to you. If you have direction for us in the future, we'll certainly adhere to that. But it was in that or with that intent that we brought this group of people together.
Do we need a separate agenda item on this for the future? So I heard there's some commissioner names. How was it decided that that commissioner, not another one, should be included in the group? That's another arbitrary sort of decision, so.
Mayor Sananian, council members, those commission member representatives were voted in by their board as their representative.
Rayford Democracy.
Exactly. And then we would also like to make note of it that the representatives from the various terms of the historical society, the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, Glendale Chamber, and also the downtown Glendale, we reached out to all of the board members. And those board members were then providing us their representative as well. So they were taking back that information back to their constituency, their group. So, and there, I believe Mr. Calvert attended, and let him speak on this behalf.
We did provide an update to what we were working on based on your feedback, that stakeholder workshop that we had to the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. And what we've done both with that stakeholder group, and we made the same offer to the council, the homeowners' coordinating council, was that when we moved past this point, we had developed these concepts further, we would actually like to distribute them out. So one, are these solutions satisfying the things that the public is concerned about? And also putting it back out to the stakeholder group to say, you know, do these work? Again, we've refined this to a higher level of detail. Is this going to actually work in terms of the built environment, financing, construction, things of that nature?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, moving forward on this, is there any plan for more outreach before the final report comes to council so that people that are dissatisfied with who was selected for this committee can attend those meetings and give their input?
Councilmember Devine, actually, there are no additional stakeholder group meetings scheduled. So this was a one-stop ad hoc group presentation where we were just requesting their feedback on what council's comments were and what possible concepts would be, so.
However.
However.
There's always the however. There's none scheduled. But if we feel, based on the direction given from council today, we need to go and test those concepts some more and/or garner some more feedback from the stakeholder group that includes the folks who came to the initial meetings as well as folks-- as well as folks who can be added to that group, absolutely.
Or, or any resident that wants to come, including all of these that Councilmember Agajanian is hearing from.
Because these are very important decisions for the council to make that sets kind of the, the vision for the next decade or more. And so we want to make sure, that's why we're touching base with you every couple of months, to make sure that we're not missing any steps. And if we are missing any steps, by all means, let us know, and, and we will course correct.
We will also have engagement with commissions and the Design Review Board as well. That will be open to the public.
Yes, I think, when I, when I look at the recommendations for, that was provided by the stakeholders, most of them is basically what the, what the council was saying. Most of the, it's maybe a couple of them that I want to get clarification on. It says promote larger setbacks, encourage active streetscapes, focus on scale proportions with of the buildings and what have you. And it says avoid stock of boxes and, and uniformity. The only thing that I have a question on, I want clarification, is when they said, consider increasing by right FAR height stories to provide more open space opportunity at ground floor and more variation in roof forms. So, and the other one says encourage taller buildings. So I want to understand this. Is it basically what you were indicating that if you squeeze the footprint, allow taller buildings, so you will have smaller footprints and break between the buildings? And that, that's how you create more open space? Is that where we're going at? But you don't need to increase the FAR in order to do that because if your FAR is whatever, 3.0 on 200-foot wide building, when you squeeze it to 100 feet, your FAR will stay the same. But I just want to get a clarification on that.
That is correct. Increasing FAR was not on the table as part of this. We did listen to the consideration of increasing height. That was also a comment we had heard from, from council in regards to squeezing the building, smaller footprint going up. We do explain that a little later in this presentation and how that would work with a, a more robust and revised incentive system. But increasing density, increasing FAR was never part of any of these concepts that were being brought forward.
As far as the public goes, these are the, the venues that they have to come and voice their opinion. Believe me, we hear about it every day. It's not just one meeting or another meeting. We hear the positive, you know, comments, and we also hear the negative comments as far as any development or any project in, in the city. So the public has that opportunity to approach to us, and all of us are very, very accessible and approachable. So they can, they can voice their opinion one way or the other. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like us to proceed? All right, the topic of open space. We have a quote from the council workshop. "All we got was density and no open space. I don't see the open space." And stakeholders group also commented on the fact, on the quality and the amount of open space in the downtown specific plan projects. So staff is very well aware that there is a desire to achieve high-quality, accessible, generous, and activated public open space. In turn, to, in order to do so, staff is recommending clearly defined open space criteria. This criteria would deal with the location, that it be visible and accessible to the public from the street, that the open space also have frontage requirements, whether it be open to the lobby or to adjacent retail or restaurant uses, that 100% of the open space be open to the sky, that there be minimum dimensions, both in terms of width and size and length, and that that open space include urban amenities and design requirements specifically. So you'll note that the open space throughout projects, but that open space would not be presented that's not accessible within a design project. The slide before you shows various criteria that would be enumerated in the updated standards. One would be dealing with amenities, perhaps providing one seat for every so many square feet of publicly accessible open space. That open space have trash cans specifically designed into its layout and that it would include pedestrian lighting and lighting at night for safety. That these open spaces also have universal design, that they be accessible to all ages and to all individuals, whether or not with disabilities, and it be accessible to the public at all times, except when allowed by code to be closed at, in the evenings. Criteria would also include landscape standards that would specify the minimum amount of landscaping required for these open spaces, that the planting palette be dictated, that it be compatible with the design, and that there would be one shade tree for every so many square feet of open space. And that would provide a more friendly, robust in that outdoor room that was described earlier. The open space criteria would also be updated to require decorative paving as part of their hardscape design. And last but not least, that there be an element either of a public art or some sort of special feature, that that feature, whether it's a decorative shade slash public art piece such as the one shown on the slide, that it be integrated into the urban, into the open space design. It be interactive and it be engaging. There are various types of open space, and we would go into the different criterias for the different types of open space. Here before you would be the requirements for courtyards and plazas. Again, you would specifically dictate the minimum size and dimensions of courtyards and plazas. We would specify the amount of landscaping, the quality hardscape materials, the amount of trees for so many square feet, the seating requirements, the shade requirements as numbered, lighting and public art. So we would have specific standards for courtyards and plazas as well as for passeos and alleys. So again, the passeos and alleys, we would require that they be pedestrian-friendly, that they provide connectivity with other open space or streetscape areas. There'd be a minimum percentage of landscape versus hardscape, that it include decorative paving, a public art feature, that they have active frontages, whether or not they're oriented towards the interior of the residential areas or towards adjacent commercial uses, but that there be active frontages. Yes.
I have a question on, actually, the preceding slide, and this one has percentage of landscape. We already have a ordinance, do we not, about the percentage of green space that is required? And yet we have designs coming in where the open space is three inches around the building and that, and that constitutes the requirement. Is that going to be changed with this so that there is no question about a 20 by 20 space or a three-foot by 10-foot space as open space and allowing for an incentive? Because that's really kind of a way out for a lot of developers to get incentives. Is that going to change in this update?
Councilmember Devine, we will be looking at that and adjusting the standards if they need to be increased, correct? Now, at this time, there's only a 5% of the required publicly open, accessible open space to be landscaped. We will be looking at those figures, right?
No, I think, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think the point is not just the percentage of the landscape area to be 5% or 10%, it's the, when you have a three-feet or five-foot wide landscape area in front of your building, which is up, right up against the sidewalk, and you call that a common area, that is the, that's the challenge. Or I know that the publicly accessible open space has minimum width and length, right? It's like 10 by 10, 10 by, something like that, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yes, there are standards enumerated in the DSP guidelines, and I bet there has been a little bit of discussion regarding whether those minimum area standards versus minimum length standards are consistent. And we will clarify that in the next go-around.
The goal is to be as intentional as possible so that we don't have those kind of issues that people find a way, applicants find a way around, and they're defeating the intent of the code of what we're trying to accomplish.
I like the way you think.
And last, to follow up on the passeos and alleys, we will be looking at the building height relationships, so the width of the open space in relation to the adjacent building height so that it be proportional, and that these publicly accessible passeos and alleys be fully accessible, and that the hours of operation be noted on branded signage at this point, I believe, yes.
So this is actually an example from San Francisco. They, they use an incentive system to create public open space. And while the hours may be limited, depending on the location and the context, they have this branded, branded signage that is on every location. And what we would like to look at doing is how can we create our own kind of branded element to that? We may have all these spaces, but it's not always clear whether or not that's publicly accessible. And while we're trying to create design features that are visual cues to, to residents and users, it also would not hurt to incorporate a consistent signage element so that if somebody had used a plaza before and they had seen the sign, maybe they're walking down the street a few days later, they see that on a passeo. They know that that's a publicly accessible space. So coming up with a branded logo, a branded graphic, making sure that the name of that public space, the hours of operation are clearly defined, letting them know what the amenities are. Maybe it's seating, maybe there's an art element to it, maybe it's fully accessible. Also listing the code reference and who the responsible party is for maintenance on it.
Which brings, did we want to stop on incentives? Okay, and which brings us to the topic of incentives. We heard that the incentive program has fallen short in certain circumstances and that the city didn't obtain the public benefit for which it was intended. So this was noted during council workshop, is also during the stakeholders group. So what staff is proposing in order to enhance the incentive system and to increase that public benefit is to take a look at the, at the existing incentives on record in the DSP and then also consider new ones. The first one that we would be examining and modifying would be the open space incentive. And so we would be revising the standards and the guidelines and increasing the area that's required and, and also identifying the additional amenities that are required in that so that it actually be a substantial usable space as opposed to some of the slivers that we've been seeing in previous residential developments along Central Avenue. We would also be taking a look at hotels and seeing, is there a reason to increase the incentive for hotels? Also examining the current lead, the sustainability incentive, which because of current building codes is somewhat redundant. And so we would be modifying the lead incentive. And then as part of the menu and to add a more robust selection of incentives to really focus on the public benefit, we would be looking at incentives for such things as artists or creative spaces, diversity in unit mixes, talk about mobility options and, and biking versus scooters versus shared car incentives and whatnot. Looking at shared parking arrangements between properties such as allowing for residential developments to possibly use the parking at an adjacent commercial parking structure at night when it's not being utilized. Also, specific uses for public benefits as well as possible transfer of development rights would be dedication for public land or preservation of assets. For instance, if you, if you have two lots and you're going to preserve one of them as a mini park, allow you to go up and obtain additional height and number of, well, we're limiting the number of stories, but additional height and FAR perhaps on the other adjacent property while you're maintaining a smaller either public mini park or some sort of historical asset, an adjacent building that would transfer the development rights to the adjacent property.
And this is essentially just a sample list. What we'd like to do is have council help us form that if a, a more robust system is something that council would like to move forward with. Also, feedback from the public, feedback from the public and, and other stakeholders of what are the things that are important to, important to the community? What's important about the incentive system is that that is an opportunity for us to get community benefit. It does not necessarily mean that it's, it's always executed correctly. It needs to be calibrated. It needs to be calibrated based on the value of, of council and the community and what they would like to see. One of the things that we heard from, from council was diversity in unit mix. Now, that is something that we would have to essentially incentivize. It's hard for us to go to somebody and say, you have to put this many number of certain unit sizes, whether that's number of bedrooms or whatever it may be. But we can incentivize that. And essentially, a development could hit a certain threshold, and we, we can, as part of that incentive, encourage a certain number or essentially require as part of that incentive, a certain number of those units be two bedrooms or more, that they're larger units. We've heard the feedback that there are too many studios, too many one bedrooms. So this is one way that we can encourage that.
Do you need, do you need to have incentives to, to enforce that? Or you can have part of your code to, to dictate any new development in a certain area has to have a variety of unit mix?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember of, of Garpetin, excuse me. We looked at this, and it's a couple of issues that come into, to play here. One is state code preemption, state building code preemption in terms of requiring a unit size of a certain type or number, certain number of bedrooms. We, we in large respect have some preemption issues there, meaning state law controls, as long as you can build a unit that complies with the, whatever those building code requirements are, we have a difficulty imposing, imposing that requirement. In addition, we have to be very careful in the area of requiring a, a unit size, unit type that's requiring it, and where that type is really designated for, for families because then we could run into some housing discrimination types, types of issues. So that's why, as we've discussed it and working with planning, and that's why what Bradley's referring to, it really, it's probably better, a better approach is to, to incentivize it as opposed to making it a requirement.
Okay, then it goes back to the, I mean, I want to have a variety of unit mix. It's not just only two bedrooms or three bedrooms or one bedrooms. 90% of the, maybe 80% of the buildings that were built, they're all one bedrooms or singles. So we provided that housing stock, if you will. And we are lacking, we're short in other types of, you know, projects or other type of, types of units. So in, in order to maybe address that issue is, again, the density issue. If you have a certain FAR and your density is lower, you have to build larger units in order to come to the maximum density. Instead of 100 units an acre, if you, if you adjust the density to 70 units an acre, I'm just, these are examples, don't, don't quote me on that. But if you have 70 units instead of 100 units, naturally, they're going to build up to 70 units, but the units will get larger, and they can't build, when, when you say you have 100,000 square feet, build as much as you want, if you can park it, you can build it. Of course, they're going to build a singles and one bedrooms with one parking. So I think we can, we should look into enforcing the, the, the density limit in order to achieve the, the type of products that we want.
We could bring back as part of the, the January date, looking at this from both perspectives. One, from putting that kind of dwelling units per acre density. We could also include an incentive-based system and look at how the two work and which one would most likely achieve those intended results so that we're considering all possibilities to get there. In terms of trying to create that, that larger housing, encouraging the potential for families to live downtown, is also looking at other important elements to that. It's that making sure that the amenities and the open space are provided. So as part of these, these developments, if we were doing an incentive system or design guidelines that went along with it, requiring play areas that actually go with those multifamily developments and maybe incentivizing and providing a little bit of a boost if they make sure that those play areas are accessible to the public and not just to the residents. And these are all things that we should consider because we are very fortunate to have schools right on the periphery of downtown. That's not the case in a lot of cities. So we actually have the most important framework elements to encourage families and children to live downtown. But we also need to make sure all of those extra things are there, such as the design guidelines for the, for the actual units themselves. The reason why I bring that up is there are two opposing cities that have actually tried this before. One, one put design guidelines that were very important. They had done a survey to understand that families wanted to live in the lower levels of the buildings, they wanted the common areas to face, you know, laundry facilities to face out on playrooms, small features like that. Another city actually upped the requirements, said we, we want three bedrooms, but we have no design guidelines along with it. And what happened is they were getting approximately 800 and 900 square-foot three-bedroom units. Families obviously will not live in those, so that their intent to have families live there turned into units that were purchased and then rented out to nearby college students. So the reason why I bring this up is that it's, it's very well-intended to pursue these larger units, but we do need to look at the other, other elements that go along with it. And that may be resources that, that we have to consider. And that may be resources that we have to consider. Center City Philadelphia actually provides a website as part of their Downtown Association that acknowledges where doctor's offices, schools, playgrounds, daycare facilities are. Just putting that extra layer in there to make sure that those units are achieving the intended result, if you will, and having all the supporting features along with it. The incentive system, some of the comments we heard back is that it may be acceptable to go taller if the footprint is smaller, if we are providing more open space. And this is a challenge that many cities are trying to achieve. If we look at this with an incentive program, we have existing or increased heights, increased densities. Part of the challenge here is that that hundred and eighty-five that I just outlined right there, there's essentially a zone between about ninety-five feet and somewhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred feet that it just does not financially make sense to build that building. You're switching construction types. You're going from wood to potentially concrete or steel. If financially is not there, around two hundred, two fifty becomes that threshold where it makes the most sense. So, one thing that we could consider is in these zones where it's a five-point-two FAR, hundred and eighty-five feet, is increasing that height by approximately twenty, maybe forty feet if necessary to get it into that zone where it makes financial sense to build that development. There's a really great study out of Washington DC that looked at this that we're using to kind of establish that baseline of what works in terms of construction cost. Again, we would examine the impacts of eliminating heights in stories. The average residential floor to floor is about ten feet. Twelve stories and a hundred and eighty-five feet is substantially larger. Again, that makes it economically inefficient. If we want to pinch these buildings, make them smaller, go higher and get more open space, it's, we have to begin to sculpt and mold from that perspective of height. And this graphic here, the map here shows that area that would actually see that those larger heights outlined in red, that's the orange central and the Broadway center area to bring them into some of the zones or that kind of height zone where it makes that most economic sense. As for the rest of the developments or the rest of the zones, we can easily achieve eighty-five feet with the right type of incentive system potentially. That is still allowed by code. You don't have to switch construction types. So, again, looking at this graphic, this is typically what we see. What we want to do is pinch that building, open it up at the ground level. Right now, we have about one or two incentives that we can put into this, but again, there's nothing that helps them bridge that gap. Maybe they can get the three-point-two FAR, but they can't get enough FAR to fill that box for a taller building to justify going taller. So, what we're looking at is could we raise the standards on the open space, change the valuation of some of these community benefits, create more options for them, but change that value? We've heard that, you know, is one square feet of open space worth ten more square feet of development space? Changing that valuation, but also creating more opportunities to pluck from an incentive system to kind of fill that void. So, maybe it's that larger unit size. We could save room for inclusionary housing and how that helps fill that void. We could look at other elements that are important, whether it's a specific use or a specific element to a downtown that we would like to see and help fill that box ultimately.
I have a question. So, if we make it taller than, are we adding to the density of that building? Because what we could do is if we do that, then we could maybe put something in there where we increase the percentage of affordable housing instead of the inclusionary housing that's necessary if they're building more units by, you know, getting an incentive or something for building a higher, taller building. We could ask for maybe eighteen percent or, you know, extra five percent of affordable housing in that structure. Is that a possibility?
It's definitely something we can look at as part of the incentive system. Obviously, we have to look at how that overlays with a number of other factors, whether that's state or inclusionary zoning. So, that's a hard one to answer just off the cuff, but we will certainly look into that. What I would, and what I would say too, what this accomplishes, if you go back to this graphic from our workshop, this is kind of what we're getting, those squat buildings, five stories, open in the center, filling the lot line from one side to another, and the intent is to try to pinch that, narrow it. We can still apply those streetscape standards. Vancouver does a great job with this. They actually create high-rises wrapped with townhomes. It still feels pedestrian scale, but pinch that and then we create that open space and that can be fulfilled through our enhanced guidelines essentially to create that. So, we have one more brief section, then I promise that we're done. We know this is a lot of information, but we're also trying to be as robust and comprehensive as possible.
All right. Last but not least, what we heard through council's workshop and stakeholder group is that oftentimes you have projects that are approved, yet somehow they're morphed in their final version in terms of development. And also in regards to, thank you. All right. I'm going to go back here. Forgive me, we're going to, a little staid. Okay. Okay. So, currently, projects in the downtown specific plan area are vetted by the urban design studio staff here in-house in the planning department and the projects are then brought to city council for review and approval. On recommendation by the stakeholder group, there was a thought that the projects be vetted and analyzed by the designer review board for recommendation to the city council. And this would include a variety of other enhancements and requirements as part of the designer review board review for the DSP projects.
And some of the other elements that we're considering, and this is part of a larger package that you will potentially hear about later, is raising that standard of the submittal packet. We heard, we've heard from council, we've also heard from the public, you know, what's being built is not what we thought was going to happen because there are changes that are occurring and that includes value engineering. On our walking tours, you saw a number of those raised planters that were supposed to be at-grade, maybe it's open space or even if it's just grass, but it's at-grade and not a raised planter. And what happens is not enough of the details have been flushed out when they should be and they absolutely could be. We could be asking for this information upfront and holding them more accountable to these community benefit elements that we do see as important. We're also looking at how we take subjective design and put that into a more objective analysis and review. So, looking at a checklist system or a point system that would put a value on the design features and the public benefit that council and the community deems appropriate. And we would essentially review that project, not only for its aesthetics, but has it achieved those core principles and we would find a way to put a value around that. Ultimately, we would include this as part of a larger streamlining and improvement process to design review, starting with downtown and then hopefully trickling that down through other review processes. Other things that we have considered, last part here, is that to make sure that we're current and forward-thinking, one of those considerations for that height is also that there will be a change in construction types coming in the near future, within the next three to five years. Timber will be allowed for high-rises. We should be out in front of that and make sure that our code is prepared for that. But to also make sure that we're updating this, the decisions that come out of this, ultimately, we don't want to be the final say for the next ten or fifteen years. What we need today may be not what we need or we may need something different in the next three years or five years. If we do pursue a more robust incentive system, we may get a lot of one thing and we need more of something else. So, going back in three years and readjusting those values to make sure that we're current with construction trends, current with the needs of the city, but also putting performance metrics in place for that so that we're constantly analyzing this, analyzing the success, whether these public spaces are being used, if our design features are accomplishing the things that we wanted them to accomplish.
Follow-up question. I mean, these projects take two, three, four years to develop, occupy, it's like three to four years. If you have something in place for three years, I don't think you will have that metrics in three years or five years to understand if that project works or not. So, I think that's why sometimes, you know, we talked about this many moons ago, that's why they have a little bit longer time in order to find out if, just, that's what we're doing right now, just switch off for a short period of time and they call it a gap study and come back and see if what we built is working or not. I think we need to consider that as well.
And we can modify that window as much as we need to as well, but that is correct. Yeah, there could be some overlap or we may not have enough data essentially. So, that's something that we could change over time.
Which brings us, I just have another comment on bringing the designs to the design review board, bringing the projects to design review board before council. I think that's a great idea. I think it puts even more importance on the appointments that are made to DRB to make sure that they have the background and at least some knowledge of design and urban design, et cetera. And it also, I think, opens the possibility of a second design review board because if we start giving them more projects and more projects, there may be a necessity for that. So, just something to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I have comments about the whole DRB idea, but I'll talk about it during my comments, yes.
About the same issue, I raised the issue, same issue in our meeting. I don't know if we want to send the plan or drawings to the DRB to vote on it. Maybe they review it and, you know, advise us how to proceed because eventually we decide here and so, whatever they decide is not bound or we don't have to follow their decision. So, instead of going through voting on these issues, maybe they review it and they bring their ideas to the city council members.
Council member, Jeanian, council members, the recommendation to have it go before the designer review board prior to going to city council, it would be for recommendation only. It would not be for a vote and it would not be for approval by the DRB. It would solely be for their comments following analysis and review of the finer details by the designer review board and their comments and recommendation would then be presented as part of the final package to city council.
All right, otherwise it wouldn't come to council unless it was appealed.
And this brings us to our last and final slide for the evening. Next steps, with council's comments on the proposed concepts, we will then be given clear direction and proceed with the draft of the development standards and the preparation of the amendments for the DSP. We would also be meeting with Kaiser Marston, who would then analyze the economic feasibility of these finalized concepts, the buildability, the viability of these concepts. We would be bringing back the recommended changes and amendments to city council for your review and input in January in 2019, short, less than two months away, and then presenting those same amendments to both the designer review board and planning commission for a final review back in March of next year.
Okay. And I want to invite our speaker up before we go into more in-depth council comments. And I like the, you know, that it's coming back in March. I had to miss my walking tour and therefore, I haven't been able to give you substantive comments because I had surgery on the day of my walking tour and unfortunately, it's connected to my ability to walk. So, I'll be able to walk in about a month, which gives us plenty of time. So, thank you. With that, Catherine Yurka, three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Sanani and members of city council. I participated in the stakeholder meeting and I'm very grateful to staff to have had the chance to do so. And I want to thank you for requesting a review of the DSP and also for your, you know, thoughtful and critical evaluation of some of the results. I was very happy to hear you advocate for greater setbacks, more open space, higher quality design and better quality materials. I'm here because I wanted to offer some of the feedback from the residents on who participated in the meeting because I felt that some of these weren't represented in the brief staff report. And I am a little confused because the staff report mentioned a greater by right FAR, but that seems not to be on the table. So, that was definitely something that we did not advocate for. We wanted more required open space. I do think that there was not consensus about wanting taller buildings. Height averaging, I take to be different. If you're going to start building, you know, twelve, fifteen-story buildings that are, you know, within the DSP but close to residential areas, that's going to raise some issues. I also wanted to point out that the stakeholders agreed that projects should go to the DRB before going to council. We also thought that they should go to the planning commission. If it would go to the planning commission, if it were outside the DSP, it should go if it's inside it. It seems like it's time to start hearing from your experts on these projects and that it doesn't make sense to cut these groups out of the process on the most visible buildings in our city if the goal is to ensure better quality design as well as buildings that are making a positive contribution to the urban fabric. I did want to share with you the most interesting and revealing thing I learned at the stakeholder meeting. It was really actually great to sit in a room full of developers and hear with it. Usually, I just imagine myself as a fly on the wall. And this was a comment I heard from an architect who works at a large firm. And he jokingly took responsibility for most of the buildings that you criticized at the council meeting a couple of months ago. It turns out he was exaggerating. But he basically asked staff, and this is a paraphrase, "Are you really prepared to require high-quality design?" Because if not, and what I took him to be saying, and this was the kind of the undercurrent of the meeting, is that developers and architects know they've been getting away with something in the downtown and they also, you know, are starting to think that that may be coming to an end and that they're prepared to continue to build, but that it is really, really important that you make it crystal clear to staff and to the development community that poor quality designs, poor quality materials are just not going to fly in Glendale anymore. And this is part of the design review, may I have another three seconds? And this is part of the design review process. Lots of these things can change and I think they're great ideas that have been presented to you, but a lot of it is just being really, really serious about design review. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Interesting. So, one of the architects, I guess, admitted that the design is of low quality. All right. So, who wants to go first? Mr. Najarian, I think it feels like you have a lot to say.
Well, aside from saying I told you so, I want to remind everyone, Ms. Devine's question was where were you five years ago? I'll tell you where I was eight years ago and perhaps ten years ago, and that was trying to implore my colleagues on council, none of which are seated with me today, to institute exactly what we've just done, to put a temporary moratorium in until we can revisit our design standards. And the buildings that first came up are the ones on Brandon Wilson, the Elevate, the Brio, a couple others. And when they came in, they looked like, they didn't look like they should. Those requests were not just denied by the members on council, but also by planning staff. Planning staff vilified me when I asked for a moratorium to revisit these standards. Not talking about any of the planning staff currently, you were not in the positions of power at that time. But this is a long time coming. We really should have done this eight years ago because what I saw was these developers getting by and gaming the system. They were gaming the system in the areas of open space. They were gaming the system in terms of quality and in terms of the type of materials. And the brakes should have been put on this freight train years ago, but for one reason or another, it wasn't. I commend my colleagues. This was only last April that this issue came up and it wasn't that easy. It took a little bit of cajoling also at that point, but ultimately, I give credit to my colleagues for seeing what was going on and agreeing to this moratorium. Oh, good Lord, a moratorium. The earth was going to crack in half and Glendale was going to get swallowed up. No, it's the best thing we could have done was to sit back and look at these standards. And I very much appreciate staff's input on this and my colleagues were previously and in the future going through and looking at some of the things that are going wrong. I think we need to be more specific. I forget the term you used, Bradley, but it was greater definition or greater?
Intentional.
Intentional with these standards that we're going to implore because we've left it, we've left it to the developers and we trusted them and they abused our trust in many respects. And as you go on the walking tour, each of us will see those particular areas of open space that were supposed to be a great meeting place and a great oasis in what is now the canyon of Central Avenue. Council member Garpetian points it out all the time and that was, his instance was supposed to be an open space and now is a four-foot-tall raised planter that, you know, a bird would be lucky if it could fly in there and perch on a twig. So, we need to be really specific in all these areas. I know this is a large overview that you're giving us. I support, I support. this is a large overview that you're giving us. I support, I support much of what you're talking about. The, I like the idea of creating more open space, giving greater, pushing it and squeezing it in for greater height. I'm not excited about adding incentives to this deal. I think we should set it down and say, these are our, these are our intentions, this is our definition, and you have to meet it. I mean, in theory, I think going to DRB is a good thing, but in practice, I don't think it's going to add anything to this situation. I would rather have it come straight to council. DRB, I mean, it's a little bit of, you know, they're professionals, they're the developers, they're in this thing, they have friends, they have connections. They don't take the heat. When things go south, it's all of us on the dice that take the heat for a bad design. And believe me, speaking from experience, despite voting against many of these projects, I have personally taken the heat for the bad design that we see now on Central Avenue. Not just taken heat, but been the brunt of, of high-priced hit pieces, blaming me for what's been going on there. So I'd rather it come to council directly with staff's recommendation. I mean, if we want experts, you guys are the experts. DRB, I don't think has the skin in the game that either you do as our staff or as we do as council members. And I'd like to, I'd like to see this as it gets flushed out. I, I think we're in the, going in the right direction. I think that what we're going to be getting are much better products aesthetically and ergonomically for this city, and that's what we need to do. And believe me, there's a lot of potential development out there still. Let's tighten those standards, and let's make the next phase of our growth the, the very best that we can make it as a, as a city.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Garbichin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we talked about so many different items and issues. As far as the publicly accessible open space goes, the lighting, the signage, has to be inviting, has to have all the elements that, that you want to have in there. No exposed utilities. Also, the commercial components that, most of this, I don't know if there's an incentive, if it's for me, I'm not available.
It's your wife.
Yeah. I wouldn't be surprised. If, if, is there an incentive to have a commercial component into this buildings? No, no incentive for it, right? So the commercial portion of it, sometimes we call it a mixed-use project. In some areas, it works, in some areas, it doesn't work. I don't know how they're, they're doing at this time, like the one that was, used to be called ISIS on Colorado. I don't know if they're full or not.
Brio.
Brio. And the Triangle project in Las Feliz, I don't know if they're doing well or not. So I don't know, we, we asked them to, to, to basically put a commercial component within their, in their property or not, or their project or not. That's something that we need to look at, that we know which areas are better for commercial or not. So that's something to, to think about. I agree with Mr. Najarian about DRBs, not just they don't have a skin in the game and, or do, but the most complaints that I get from the average jaws in this town is that their projects are scheduled for DRB four months later, because there's only one DRB. If anything, we can maybe have more DRB meetings and have maybe two, where we talked about this. This is not for today's discussion, but I think they have enough work to do as it is, and they're backed up for months, and I don't want to add any more to their plate. One thing that we need to consider as well, the incentives. Incentives, I want to stay away from incentives. I think we're going the wrong direction, adding more incentives to, to our code. I want to stay away from the incentives. This area is highly, it has enough density, it's dense enough, the density that we allow, like, most of these, these, these areas, they have 89 units an acre, which is a very dense zoning. And some of them don't have any density, and I think that's something that we need to look into and, and implement density limits on the, on these areas as well. And again, I want to stay away from giving more incentives, density transfer, I'm totally against it, because what you do is you just get a density from one area and cramp everything on one corner and double your density that way. Having mini parks, these are new things, never came to us before. I don't know where that idea came from. But mini parks in downtown, they get an incentive. I'm not for that at all. If we want more open space in our projects, we can ask for it. This is our, this is in our purview, this is in our, in our power to say, we want more open space in our downtown projects. Our 1250, they have 200 square feet per unit, common area, 40 square feet, private open space. We can ask for it. I mean, that's something that we need to look into. And having the density, again, it will dictate the, the size of the units. If you have the FAR and your dens, density is, is limited, the number of units is limited, it will be larger units, because then maybe you will provide the type of projects that we want to see. Also, for these large, large projects, and we, we talked about this before, maybe they should provide a model, a basic model of the project. When they bring a project here, Design Review, they bring material board. We don't get that here. If you want us to do a, this, this, this body is capable of reviewing these designs. Bring material board, bring good renderings, perspective of the projects. Some of the projects, maybe a model with the buildings next, next, next to them, so we can see what the relationship would be in the future, so we can come back and say, oh, I didn't know I approved this, I didn't think it's going to look like this. So I think these are very expensive projects. Building a model is not, not going to be a problem. And the other thing is, the, the workmanship, I think we need to really ask for a better quality finishes in these buildings. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think I covered most of the things I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One, one more thing, one more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
No, no, not you, I'm just, we're like losing councilmen. Oh, that's why I have, I have more time. Thank you.
Take it, sir.
If they, if they use one incentive, they cannot use the other. If they use SB 1818, they cannot use the SB 1818, the open space, the, I don't know, the arts, arts piece. They use one incentive, that, that would be, they can't use both of them.
Okay.
Just a clarification. Are you, is the direction you want to give, if they use SB 1818, no other incentives, or you can't use two incentives? And, I mean, assuming we still have incentives afterwards, but could you use open space and, and something else? Adaptive reuse?
No. I mean, I don't know what adaptive reuse incentive is, but with the open space incentive that it's being used a lot, for every square foot, you, you get 10 square feet. So you provide a, a thousand square feet, I don't know where, maybe, I don't know, it has to be in one spot or not, but if it's in two or three different spaces staggered through the project, then you get 10,000 square foot of building and another story on top of that, because you get, use SB 1818, and it just really squeezes these projects. So again, we want to have a strong downtown. I think we do have a strong downtown already, but I think our, our goal of having a moratorium is to look at our zoning code and kind of ease things up a little bit. And, and I don't want Glendale to become Manhattan with all these, you know, tall buildings, and we want to have different, different projects in Glendale, don't get me wrong. But I think it has to be a different unit mix, provide all kinds of different, different projects with units that will serve, you know, who will have two bedrooms and three bedrooms. And I got to tell you, when you have a few thousand units and it doesn't put a dent in your enrollment of your school district, that's, that's an issue. So that's, I'm going to stop here. So I, I hope I answered your question.
We'll, we'll look at it. The, if we, if done properly, incentives get you public benefit. And so the question is, if you use an incentive and you get the, the 10,000 more square feet, because you're going to put 1,000 feet, is it okay to get more public benefit using another incentive and will give you more square footage, or not? And that's, that's the question.
No. My, I think my understanding was, we put a moratorium in to stay away from incentives. So this, whatever happened, because as it was mentioned, they can go around the code, and they're, they're smart. That's their job. That's what they do. And I don't blame them, it's just the way of business. So I want to, I want to stay away from, stay away from incentives, have better design. It's dense as it is. 100 units an acre, it's a lot of, you know, it's a lot of units. So that's, that's my thing.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rajanian?
I just, I guess I mentioned, but the one question I have is, ensure well-designed, interesting building facade, facades. I have a problem, this is very subjective sentence. We have to clarify for those who are going to come forward to put new buildings to know what they have to do. And the other thing is, as I mentioned before, the buildings, most of the buildings, they have, the facade is such a cheap material has been used. We have to prevent that. We have to, as has been mentioned here, I guess, also, we have to make sure the exterior of the building, the facade of the building, a good quality materials has been used. Not stucco. I mean, stucco should be absolutely prevent, we have to prevent to be used for outside of the building, or the facade of the building, I think that's, doesn't bring any quality to the city's structures or buildings.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Devine?
All righty. First of all, I, I just want to say that I thank you for, for this, this report. I feel that we're headed, I'm encouraged, I feel that we're headed in the right direction. And I think if, if we can make all of this work, it will make a really big difference in the downtown area. Streetscaping, I think it's so important to add walkability and pedestrian friendliness to our downtown, to soften, just soften that harsh reality of concrete everywhere. I, I think that just has to be changed. We definitely need to expand the requirements, the widths of sidewalks, the vegetations, everything that you spoke about in the report, I think are all important factors. I'm encouraged, because you listen to us, you listen to the, the representatives that were on that committee, and I think every, we're all echoing the, the feelings of our residents. Everyone says the same thing. I agree with Mr., Councilmember Najarian, to be specific, be intentional. Again, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. They will find a way around different requirements. So let's be specific, and, and so that we can discourage that, that sort of activity. I learned a new word today, modulation, as far in architecture. I always used articulation, but modulation, I think, is, is a, I love that word now, and I love what it means in, in architecture and in buildings. That's what adds interest, that's what takes away that cold feeling. It's welcoming, it's friendly, and I think that's the kind of architecture we need in our city. I'm sorry that my colleagues don't agree about Design Review Board. I think we have some architectural experts on that, on that board that could help us before that design gets to this council, because, you know, without a background, it's, it's difficult to, to make these decisions. So I feel that would have been helpful, but I guess it's perhaps not meant to be. So thank you for, for doing this report. I'm glad that we, we did this update, and I can't wait to see the results. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll try to keep my comments short. I, I appreciate all my colleagues' comments. I think they're very well thought out, and also are in the spirit of recognizing that things didn't go right in downtown. There's no, no reason to hide the fact. I think there's a realization, not only by our residents, but also by our staff, and I want to thank staff for preparing this, this report. Very useful. Something went wrong with downtown and the implementation of DSP. Now, if you look at the very first project, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the first project in that stage was ISIS, Brio. And when that was built, you know, I visited ISIS, maybe I want to say, 2000, early 2013, and it was a nice project. It was, it's well-done. It's, the, it, you know, care was taken to make sure that it's a nice building to live in, the finishes are nice, high-quality. And as if the lights were turned off at that point, and the rest of what you see ensued, the first project I followed, ISIS, Brio, was the Elevate, which already was a huge downgrade for ISIS. And then, like dominoes, these projects started being completed, and only at the stage of completion did you realize that this, this is not what was approved, and this, this just, it's not going the right way. Unfortunately, the approval project was, the approval process was staggered so fast, one after the other, and their completion dates were so far out that the results of what was really being done didn't become apparent until, until much later. And again, as everyone said, cheap workmanship, very questionable architecture, the tunnel filling, especially on, on Central because of the lack of setbacks. And I've been fighting for this, this setback issue for years now, because I, I realized early on that not having enough sidewalk space is not only not conducive to a pedestrian culture, which we claim to be promoting in downtown, but also creates a problem, you know, creates this endless row of buildings with no soul, no spirit, no, no, or no sense of any urbanism. And even, even the way this obsession with so-called modern architecture came about in a questionable, questionable way. Apparently, it was the whims of one council member, and that council member had insisted that everything that we brought before council have this soulless, really devoid of any architecture, design, and it happened. It followed. And it was up to staff to sort of see what was happening and, and give us the warning, but didn't happen. And the projects that were brought before us, in the end, were not the projects that were, that were built. And I, I've been asking again, staff for years, well, isn't there some, at some point in the process where we stop them, we punish them, because it's becoming apparent that this is not what we voted for? And I'm hoping that at the end of this process, we will have a solid process, solid way of dealing with that issue. If they bring us something, we approve that, we want that, nothing less than that. And if they don't, then their project is going to be disrupted and stagnate, and hopefully they'll, either they'll come correct or they'll be punished. In terms of the sort of the details of, you know, my, my colleagues addressed those, staff had made good recommendation. With respect to the mixed-use aspect of urban design, now, I, it's, it's good to have a good mix of retail and restaurant in the streetscape typology, in the mixed-use buildings. And we, I think we want to be cognizant of the fact that retail is, you know, faltering and is kind of a dying breed, so concentrate more on maybe the restaurants and, and shops, you know, the type of stuff that folks don't go online to buy, because we don't, we don't want to sort of design space for a certain use and then end up having no use for it. The issue of open space, again, enough was said about it, you know, let's, let's push everything away from sidewalks and, and make things, you know, make the buildings smaller in footprint, and create more open space and green space. And we know it's ironic, if you're on Brand Boulevard, the high-rises, the really, our, our biggest buildings have the most open space. They have the plazas, the public plazas in front of it, they have the, the areas on, on the side and in the alley, next to the alley where, well, people can come out of the building during lunchtime and actually sit and have lunch. And so it's not, it's not the high-rises that are a problem, in fact, it's these low-rise five, six, comparatively speaking, low-rise buildings that are a problem, which have absolutely no plaza space, no public space, and they've really gamed the system, and they got away with it. So I have no problem with going vertical, no problem, so long as they fulfill all the other requirements, because experience has shown that when it's done well and it's done responsibly, it fills and fulfills all the purposes that we've been talking about here, which is walkability, creation of open space, creation of green space, creating a healthy urban environment as opposed to a tunnel. I'm still a little unclear about why it is that in order to mandate certain requirements, we have to couple them with incentives. What is it legal, I don't understand the legal aspect of it, although I know City Attorney chimed in on it, but...
It depends on what those things are. If we're getting into housing itself, unit types, essentially what that's doing is dictating who lives there, that...
The unit sizes and stuff? So we have no authority to...
In many ways, yeah. If you were to say you can only have studio units, then you're essentially prohibiting larger households from living in your city.
But we...
If you only go larger, then you're essentially prohibiting smaller.
As council, then we don't, we can't just arbitrarily just choose not to vote for it, because that doesn't correspond to your vision, I mean, how does that, because, again, there was a great example, Councilmember Garpetti brought it before I did, to build 4,000 new units in downtown and see a decline in school enrollment, that's a problem. I'm sorry, that is a problem. That shows some type of, almost like social design. It seems like through our, through our planning structure, planning codes and laws, the cities being kind of, you know, we're disincentivizing families from living in Glendale, that's a problem. So, you're saying we can't do that, we can't require that there be a certain mix in these buildings?
The problem that you're describing is actually one that's common in many cities. Most cities are struggling with this right now, and yes, we cannot say specifically you have to build this kind of unit, and that's why we do bring this concept of the incentive system, and maybe incentive isn't even quite the exact description, but triggers, as we were mentioning before, that if you would like to go taller or whatever it may be, or fulfill that higher density that we do allow or FAR, that we have that as an incentive or slash trigger, because that's going to be our mechanism to achieve that. We can't just go in there and write and say, you have to do X percent of this, this, and this.
Okay.
It's just not within our purview.
So, based on that, although I completely agree with sort of the reasoning of my colleagues about saying, no, no incentives whatsoever, in order to be able to control the mix aspect of development, I'm willing to look at whatever incentives you think, you know, we can look at and consider for approval in order to be able to control the mix.
The one thing I'd add to that is, it's not just about the housing either, if there's certain uses we decide in the future that we're missing in downtown that we really need, we can't go in and say, you have to put a grocery store in this space, you have to put a daycare in this space. We can put them in a category and we can zone for that category, but having that kind of system does allow us to go back, if we were to update this every three to five years and say, okay, now we want to give an incentive for hotels or daycare centers or whatever that may be, so it does give us that flexibility.
Exactly, and my next point was going to be the whole playground issue, that falls under the same rubric, right? It's the same issue.
You can actually...
In order to require a building, if someone wants to build a building, and I'm saying, okay, fine, but have a playground there, I would have to incentivize it, is that what you're saying?
We could actually fit that underneath the private open space requirements, that is something different, it's more amenity-based, it's not about who's living there.
Okay.
So we can put that in as part of requirements to design guidelines or open space requirements, whatever that may be.
Okay. In terms of the DRB, sending this to DRB, I agree with the majority of my colleagues who say that I wouldn't want this to go to DRB because they have their hands full, and at the end of the day, it's going to come to us, we're going to have to make our decisions, and better or worse, we rely on our staff, and we're going to continue doing that, so why have another entity involved with it? And I wouldn't even want DRB to be burdened with any additional tasks until we deal with the whole DRB issue, I mean, I think the DRB concept is coming up to us in January, so let's deal with DRB first, and then we'll think what it is, what additional or lesser tasks we're giving to DRB. And that's all I have, thank you, and I look forward to my own walking tour. You want to add something? Viliya, did you want to say something?
Mayor Saniani and councilmembers, is there a recommendation to do away, I heard that you would not like to see additional incentives offered at this point in time?
I said the opposite, I don't know, the others said I think they don't want...
I just want to make, I just want to make sure for clarity's sake, for when we proceed with the next round of amendments, does council still wish to modify and tighten up the open space incentive?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and I...
And so you would like to move forward with the open space, you would like to keep the hotel, you would like to keep the historic preservation and the reuse of buildings. For all the incentives that are now in place in the DSP, you would like to maintain those?
Please, go ahead. I think, I believe that, you know what we're, we know what we're talking about, and I think the incentives that was given and increase the number of units and the height and everything in residential projects is the problem that we are facing today. That's why we placed the moratorium in, to look at our zoning code and see what we can do. But if you keep adding incentives, it's counterintuitive, I mean, how are we just going the opposite direction? In order to, nobody wants to control unit mix, what we're asking is from everyone, is to provide a variety of units in different, different, different mixes of units in downtown as well. We're not saying go do, build 40% two-bedroom and 30% three-bedroom, and that's not what we're saying, but if you have the density limit or if you decrease your density, then you will achieve your goal of larger units, and that is because the FAR stays the same and the number of units are less. So you achieve that, the goal that we have, you know, instead of giving them incentives again, as, that I have to go look for as to where that incentive is.
But, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, that wouldn't result in us being able to have them provide, you know, if they decide to go one-bedrooms, they're going to go one-bedrooms. You know what I'm saying?
I understand, but let me try to explain it one more time. Right now, there are areas in downtown that there is no density. So you have the FAR, if you have one acre land, you can build three times as much, right? So 43,500 square feet times three, let's say 130,000 square feet of building. But we don't tell them, we cannot tell them how many units you can build into that building envelope. So what they do, they want to increase the number of units because that's the part of real estate business.
Of course.
So they build mostly one-bedrooms and singles, and maybe some two-bedrooms. But if we can tell them in the same building envelope, we can only build, I don't know, 70 units, for example, they can't build 71 bedrooms, they will build larger units, they will use the square footage because they need that price per square foot as well, so they want to maximize their FAR, but they will have less number of units within the same FAR.
Okay. I mean, if we can do that, sure.
We can bring several options and kind of pros and cons and impacts, we have economic analysis consultants as well, so we can look at these and understand which will provide us the best result, essentially.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garpetti.
And I just want to say that I think any incentive that gives us more public benefit, like affordable housing or more open space, I think we should take a look at it, see what it entails, make sure that it's tight, and that, you know, it can't be manipulated.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Are we good? We have enough instruction?
I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you for that report, and we'll move on to a German, I guess.
Second.
And we have, we're adjourned at 5:15 PM.